Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning and welcome to the February 8th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our prayer for today is Proverbs 8:12-13. "I, wisdom, live together with good judgment; I know where to discover knowledge and discernment. All who fear the Lord will hate evil; therefore I hate pride and arrogance, corruption, and perverse speech." And it's also my dog this morning. Come on, little fella. We got a six-month-old little puppy, got lots and lots and lots of energy, a mix of all kinds of different things, I'm not really sure, some kind of terrier, Jack Russell mix. He will be available on Saturday and we need your help really badly, we're full, we have 37 dogs at the kennel, so if you're thinking about it, please do it now, because we need you to come down and adopt some dogs for us. Adopt, don't shop. Come and see us on Facebook too. If this is not, if you don't want a puppy, we have a lot of older dogs, puppy, we have a lot of older dogs, puppy, we have a lot of older dogs, puppy, we have a lot of older dogs. He's got the short puppy teeth going on. Madam Clerk?
Under our resolutions, investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Trials?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Madam President, I do have a number of personnel issues I wish to discuss with the Board. Potential hires had solid ways, Job and Family Services, to name a few. I want to update you on ongoing negotiations with United Auto Workers and Job and Family Also, United Steelworkers America and county engineer. Potential sale of real estate. What we're gonna have for lunch? No, I'm sorry about that, that's not for executive session. The, but anyway, all of those topics will have gone to the Sunshine Act for Executive Session discussion, so I ask that the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss those issues I've outlined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve only the reading of the minutes of February 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Support the adoption of the Roth 457 option as expanded portfolio choice with the CCAO deferred comp program as authorized into by law by passage Senate Bill 220 on March 19, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 11585 adopted September 7, 2011, adopting a policy and procedure to determine that contractors are in good standing for awarding contracts up to 25,000. The amendment will reflect the amount should be 50,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under community development, award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 16, home repair activity for home repair assistance, which includes contingencies for any unforeseen change orders, and these being the best and most responsive complying specifications. One, Homeworks General Contractors Inc. for million in amount of $8,432 for Deborah Bromley at 308 West Lincoln Street, Overland for roof replacement. Two, JD Indoor Comfort Sheffield in the amount of $7,145 for Lori Frazier at 250 North Main Street, Overland for installation of a furnace, water heater, and water lines. Three, Solid Ground Construction Inc., Westlake, in the amount of $4,400 for Dennis and Elizabeth Pendings at 827 East Drive, Sheffield Lake for installation of furnace and water heater. Four, Modern Roofing, Seven Hills, in the amount of $4,398 for Monica Bakie at 4322 Bell Avenue, Sheffield Lake for roof replacement. Five, Concrete &amp; More Inc., Avon Lake, in the amount of $4,043 for Sherry Fitz or 824 East Drive, Sheffield Lake for storm sanitary lateral separation. And six, JD Indoor Comfort Sheffield in the amount of $6,932 for Willie Kraft at 4915 Rosewood Drive, Sheffield Lake for installation of old furnace and water heater.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, advertise for bids for JFS telecommunications cabling system project, notice being in journal on February 10th and 17th, pre-bid meeting at 9:00 a.m. on February 23rd, at the site and open at 2:00 p.m. on March 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Advertise for bids for JFS building rooftop unit replacement project, notice being in journal on February 14th and 21st, pre-bid meeting at 9:30 on February 28th at the site and open at 2:00 p.m. on March 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve an interim contract with Mastermind LLC, Elmore, Ohio, in the amount of $23,600 to complete safety studies for no passing zone and software upgrades. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutor's Approval S.U. Form, and $21,240 will be reimbursed through ODOT on behalf of Federal Highway Administration through CEAL.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Approve an interim contract with Mastermind LLC, Elmore, Ohio, in the amount of $6,000 to complete safety studies for speed zone at five locations. Authorize an engineer to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutor's Approval S.U. Form, and $5,400 will be reimbursed through ODOT on behalf of Federal Highway Administration through CEAL.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Approve an interim engineering services contract with K. McCartney and Associates, Mansfield, in amount not to exceed 42,000 for lateral televising system analysis Phase 1 project in Brentwood Lake subdivision, Grafton Township, and will be paid from sanitary O&amp;M professional services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
And 18, we did that last week, so we don't need to do it. So, Mr. Cordez?
You just had the motor going fast this morning, I had to, wanna back up on a couple things here.
Okay.
The, on Resolution Number 10, I'm not sure that we could, the, are we supporting the Senate Bill 220 on the 457? It says, Pat, it says authorized into law by passage, is that March 19th when that becomes effective, is that what that is?
Correct, yeah, they changed it underneath the deferred comp thing, but Senate Bill 220 allowed the Roth to become part of the deferred comp program.
Shouldn't we just pass that for both deferred comp programs now then? That we, we're members in both the CCAO and the state.
In the state.
So the law is passed, it's applicable to both, so we probably should just do that and keep it all in one resolution.
Well, let's change it from support adoption, just add the Roth 457 option according to Senate Bill 220, starting effective March 19, 2017.
For any deferred compensation programs, the county provides to its employees.
Okay, I'll make that as amendment.
Off second.
For the discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
The, on the amendment on the purchasing on Number 11, that was for, was that for the construction projects? I have additional, I need something a little bit more, I'll pass this to the clerk. Right now, the Department of Job and Family Services, under the, under the federal guidelines that were around, they, they need a procurement policy. And, and we've never really, our procurement policy's been all over the place, and, so I'm trying to accomplish a couple things. The construction one is fine, but it really doesn't accomplish completely what we need to do with Job and Family Services to meet the requirement. That, that is a, an overview, what it, and I'll ask clerk to read it in a moment, but what it really does, it just says we're gonna comply with all the rules, regulations, and stipulations of the Ohio Revised Code. Now, you know, we have generally our own practices that we follow, that are adopted by the Board, such as we, we, when possible and efficient, and efficient to do so, get three quotes on something. Now, we're not gonna get three quotes on $15 worth of pencils, but, but if you're gonna spend $500 on something, we would prefer to have three quotes. It's a moving target, and that's why I said when practical, efficient to do so, and when possible, because sometimes things are sole source vendors, and you, and you can't get that procurement that way. So, this is a broad overarching policy that'll, I believe, serve the purposes of compliance with the federal regulations, and I can get that over to Job and Family Services. I would just ask clerk to read it, and then we can discuss it more if you feel it's necessary.
Adapt procurement policies and procedures to ensure all county purchases and procurements are made in accordance with the ORC and all applicable federal and state laws concerning public purchasing. Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
I'll yield to counsel, thank you.
Okay.
I do have two matters of pending court action that I would like to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Well, yesterday, I attended a opiate forum out in Wellington, and I was amazed by the amount of people that came out for that. There's probably 200 to 300 people that were in attendance. Dr. Evans did a wonderful job, as he always does, explaining what's going on in Lorraine County with the epidemic. It had been stated, you know, for the last few years, that there was one to two people dying of overdose once a week in Lorraine County. Last night, he said there's three to four people dying every week, so this problem is not getting better. It's getting worse because of the other drugs that are being cut in with the heroin. We have a lot of tools that are helping, you know, with the Narcan. One thing that he didn't mention that needs to be brought up last night, the Narcan, which is a reversal, reverses the effects of the, the drug. You can get that at the Health Department for free, they will teach you how to administer it, so if you have somebody in your family that is suffering from the addiction, I would urge you to go to the, to the Health Department to get that. You can get it without a prescription also at the, at like Drug Mart, but it's like over $100, I think so. But thank you for everyone that came out last night to get informed. On a happier note, the Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation District is going to have a pond clinic. That's going to be Wednesday, April 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at their location at 42110 Rusher Road in Aliria. Some of the topics include pond maintenance, pond stocking, weed and algae control, fish life cycles, harvesting, and water chemistry. If you would like to attend, if you have a pond and interested in knowing more, you can contact them at 326-5800. There is a $5 registration fee, so if you're interested in that. And then, another thing that's coming up that's going to be fun, it's, the Pulse Magazine is, has the Best of Lorraine County coming up, and they have nominations, and you could do that up until March 1st on All Have Hell. Put this information up for both the Pond Clinic and Pulse Magazine, Best of Lorraine County. Some of the things that you can nominate for food or different restaurants, entertainment, health, like fitness centers, things like that, florists, service, like dry cleaners, all kinds of things. So just go on their website, it's pulslorangemag.com, and Best of Lorraine County, so that would be fun for you to nominate the people that you think are doing good, good business in Lorraine County, because we have a lot of good businesses here.
Well, can I?
Sure.
It's not just nominating folks, there's a big event.
Yep.
It, it takes place usually in July. Tickets are reasonably priced, there's vendors come out, they, especially the food vendors, they have a lot of great samples, there's always a lot to eat.
Yep.
Occasionally, there may be a little bit to drink, sometimes the, the bartenders come out, because they wanna be the best bartender selection that year, and they'll make the little, little drinks for folks, and usually, we're exceeding 650 to 700 people a year now. We've been doing it for a few years, I'd like to see our number get over 800 and just make it so impossible that we have to get a tent the following year and put some people outside.
It's almost to that point now, it's at the college, and it's, it's wall-to-wall people.
It's close. If they had not opened the Culinary Center where we can push back into that new area, we would not be able to fit in Spitzer. But, but it's, it's usually a lot of fun to come out and do that. And again, the tickets are usually about 20 bucks a ticket, you, you will get a lot of value for $20. We're looking at something new this year. As you know, you go through, you get your paper ballot, and you get your golfing pencil, and it's really a pain in the butt to carry that stuff around, and there's not a lot of tables. So we're trying to figure out how to do something.
Electronic?
Oh, electronic, right. I did talk to them about maybe the coin drop, where you put a box on the table, you know, you get something you can drop into that box, so that can't be duplicated, and you count them at the end of the evening, because getting those little, they're so long, and filling them out.
It's a good idea.
So, we're trying to improve that. I think that improving that will give people a better experience at the, the event. And for those that may wonder why we're talking about this, we've been a key sponsor of Pulse, we are an originator, and we're, we're an anchor sponsor, and it's basically with a couple partners. It's our publication that tells the great news going on around, around Lorraine County. So, we're looking forward to another productive year. We, we got a lot of stories that we, we set about a month, no, about two weeks ago, when we come up with our year, and things we like to do and see in the magazine. So if you have any ideas, please, please let me know. But we don't tell anything negative about Lorraine County, it's all about the, the good things going on here, and the things to go and see and experience here in Lorraine County. So, we'll get that up on our social media and we'll get some things going.
Good. I see progress going on over at the courthouse. You wanna talk about that?
As you know, and I guess as an update, one of the things that, that I, I thought was completely necessary was to basically dig up the foundation of the courthouse. We had put, we didn't, prior administrations, none of the Commissioners nor myself, had built office space into the, into the basement area, and, and some of that space was prior to that administration. And, but the basement was never sealed. It, it, so we took a lot of wicking of moisture into the walls and into the materials down, there was always a bit damp, and, and so I, I thought it prudent and necessary, we're gonna stabilize this building for 50-plus years, to dig up the foundation and do two things. First, coat it and wrap it with polymers to waterproof it, and then second, to lay foot of tile and drain gravel around, right around the bottom of it to be able to pump off, or at least drain off. I think that the elevation's good there, where we could just do a natural drain off without having to do some pumps, but I'm not completely sure on that. Because if you, if you look at it, it is quite a bit up off, off the street line, so, but we ran into a bit of a problem with that. They, they came in after we did the dig, and they tested the, the polymers that we wanted to use, and it wouldn't adhere in one part of the courthouse, it wouldn't adhere to the, to the stone, and so we couldn't get a warranty. They, it was obviously secular product, but they're not gonna warranty it that way, that just wasn't something I thought was the way we should go. So we, we worked through a couple issues, and we found a, a different company, would do, they was doing a different technique, was slightly more expensive, about $17,000, but they're out there now, and so what they're doing is they're, they're putting a, it isn't the same, but it's similar. It's like the, the stuff that they come, you see it on commercials, that they spray on, well, this, this gets put on, and once that dries, then it's gonna be wrapped in a second layer to seal the, the foundation, and then we'll backfill with, with gravel and, and, and drain tile around, and around the foundation.
Because there's never been foot or tile or anything.
No, no.
It's been just, yeah.
The, the, so I, I think that that's gonna alleviate some of those, you know, moisture problems. I, I just didn't see any good renovate that whole building and still not having that done, and worrying about wicking of water. The other thing was, we had to redo the landscape around the sides of the building, because it had built up over time, it was sitting on the sandstone. So you, you got all, you got all this composting material and dirt and everything, and it's just, it's keeping the, the bottom of the sandstone wet, and so it was wicking right to the sandstone. Sandstone will wick water. So, we're, we're bringing that down so that the ground level's at the basement line, when we reestablished the landscaping around, and then we're gonna be moving up and cleaning all of the sandstone, and then we're gonna seal all of the sandstone. Now, we did seal it back in the early 2000s, but it needs to be done every, I wanna say eight to 10 years, you gotta clean it and seal it. Maybe get a little bit more out of it. I think we'll get a longer period of time, now that the canopies are gone with the trees, because the building just wasn't drying out, you could see the sandstone was green, that's an indication that you're just not, you're not getting enough sun, you're not getting enough wind up in there to keep the sandstone as dry as possible. It'll rain, it'll wick some water, but then it dries, it dries right out. But what we were doing was getting wet, and then we were keeping it in the shade all through the season, and that just wasn't good for the building. So I, you, they're tenting the areas they're working at, and they'll be working around the foundation. I'm glad we're getting work done again, and, and we're moving, we're moving forward. I, I don't know if I have any more of an update with that.
It's nice to see progress happening.
We, I'm looking, just give me a second here. We don't have the bid packages to go out for the, the bid packages for the courthouse? Did we do that last week?
No, she didn't have to do them, because we already gave her, that permission was given a couple weeks ago when we rejected.
So we just used, when we reject, we just use that resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't wanna misspeak.
It said re-advertise in there.
A bit confused, I didn't wanna misspeak, but our bid packages are going out for the courthouse for the renovation. I'm hoping that we, we get some aggressive pricing on the third try. We've red, we've redone a few things, but as I've informed all of you, this is an old building, and it's, it's gonna be expensive to do some of the stuff in here, so we're back out in the marketplace, probably in about four or five weeks, we'll be looking at the bids and hopefully awarding, getting some, some significant work done. Now, the, the architects, we're trying to get done by the fall, I'm, I'm in no such hurry. I wanna take our time with this, and I wanna do it right. Though probation is happy where they are, they, they got some, they got a nice location. I have heard a little bit of complaint about the walk all the way to the justice center, but I think that's just having a little fun with us, I don't think they're upset about that. So I, I would rather see us take our time and get into the spring of '18 with the building and, and have a relaunch, rededication of the World War I memorial that's there, that nobody even knew was there, Workers Memorial, things like that. So, well, I wanna see work progress, I don't wanna do it with an urgency that, that cuts any corners.
Yep. Thanks for the update. End of my report.
Yeah, busy week. First of all, congratulations, Lorraine County Blue, Chris Barton, his entire staff, what a turnout, great job, 1,200 people plus.
Wow.
Unbelievable, like you say, they wish there was a larger facility for Lorraine County Blue, and they're packing the college, it's almost 1,400 people.
You know, I haven't been out there for a couple years to the Chili Cook-Off, mainly because you just can't move.
Yeah.
The, the, how do they get them, the occupancy permit isn't that big?
They have upstairs too. They have all the, the offices are open with tables for people to sit at.
Wow.
So it's not just the first floor, all the Chili's set up in the new culinary side.
Elbow to elbow, though.
And then all the tables, and then the upstairs is open also.
Is it tighter than the Fab Board breakfast?
Yes, much tighter.
And that, that's tight there, and it's, the, but they, they do bring out the numbers, and it's a worthy cause.
Seventh annual, it was, Pete Soto Chili Cook-Off.
Yeah, a few of those guys just started that as a, a small little thing, and, but, but, you know, the Blue takes care of their own, so they've done a great job.
Great job. Also, Nawaka Policy Committee met this past week, working on basically policies. We finished our regional transportation policy revisions, those we go to full board. We redid our diversity inclusion policies, lasted them in 2015, some changes under the federal government guidelines, and the state on how to do those, working with ODOT. We have the environmental justice areas and disadvantaged communities policies based on median income, based on minority population, and based on need. And then our asset management and performance planning policies. We also received from ODOT, Governor Kasich is working on doing a new concept to reduce congestion through a, a test on I-670 in Columbus. They're looking to use variable speed limits to improve traffic flow during peak hours, reducing congestion by creating an extra lane of traffic during peak hours, actually using the shoulder during heavy peak hours, it's done in other states.
They do that where I grew up in, in New York, especially on the Long Island Expressway, and it really does relieve, and what they do is they do it by exit, some of the, in between the more congested exits, they'll use the shoulder at certain times, and, and it goes right into the, the D ramp there, and it really does alleviate the stress, it's, because usually it's just choke points that slow everything else down. It's just a couple of those exits that get really busy, and it's, it's been very popular there.
Right, so, and then they're also talking doing the variable speed limits with the use of the shoulder lanes, they're looking to do a test project on that, trying to relieve some of the congestion. Not that we have that issue in Lorraine County, but Cuyahoga.
Are they ever gonna go to HOA lines, lanes, and?
Not on the horizon that we've received anything on. Also, gotta, in light of all the crazy stuff going on in DC, and people going, you know, that really doesn't affect me, received an email today, I serve on a joint commission with the Commissioners Association Elections Committee, and then the Board of Elections Officials. We work together within our two organizations, trying to improve, like we did the eBooks, poll books. Well, through that, the federal government has a department, I guess, the EAC, which is the Elections Assistance Commission, and helps all states do their testing and verifying of all the equipment. It's all over the country, very important. Yesterday, the Committee on House Administration voted to support Representative Greg Harper, Republican out of Mississippi, to dismantle the Election Assistance Commission, to go to a floor vote, especially in light of all of our rigged elections and everything going wrong, now we're gonna not have a way to test our equipment.
Out of Mississippi, huh? Home of the poll tax.
Yeah, exactly. Two Democrat representatives actually were trying to introduce language to add money to the Election Administration Comis, Assistance Commission. I think it'll probably be some battle, but as all, when it comes to the vote count, we'll see what happens on the Hill. But in light of everything going on, this is where it affects actually residents here, We don't have proper voting equipment, and it's not well-vetted and tested, and we depend on the federal government. Along with the past year and a half, our committee here in the state has been working with our Secretary of State Huestead to receive additional dollars to buy new equipment, because ours is all timing out. It's been over a decade since the Help America Vote Act came in, and the feds helped pay for all of our equipment, we're looking at more equipment. So he's asking for dollars to help us upgrade all of our systems. But then you get something like this, somebody who helps us do all the testing at the federal level for fair elections, going, oh, let's dismantle the organization. That's about the end of my report, but, just for fun, right?
Yeah, because I mean, we're having to prepare in the future for what's going to be a large investment for voting equipment.
Yeah, multiple hundreds of millions of dollars in Ohio alone. That's what I'm saying, they're doing these type of things, and that's where it plays down on a local, because we don't have people doing this. That means the local governments have to contribute more dollars.
Right.
To have all the equipment tested.
Right.
So Cheryl Subler, who's our, you know, main lobbyist for the Commissioners Association, forwarded a letter from the Ohio Board of Elections group to see if we want to send a letter in support of arguing this. I'm assuming the CCAO, I believe, will take this out, but then just keep my commissioners in the know, because everybody talks about our rigged elections. And in my report.
Not everybody.
No, not everybody, just the chosen few.
Yeah, the chaos and.
The ones that got elected.
The chaos and dysfunction in Washington is very, very disturbing. You know, we put people in leadership to make responsible decisions, and, but it just seems like it's a daily chaos. I know, I watch the reports in the evening, and first thing when you get up in the morning, and you're wondering what kind of chaos or dysfunction there is today, and that's unfortunate. But the administration's bringing a lot of it on itself by being very reckless and making quick decisions. We even saw the front page of the newspaper today with Representative Ramos taking a position on the sanctuary cities, and, you know, I think that his purpose there is more to make a statement about local control. You know, when you start talking about throwing elected officials in jail, or taking away funding, you're actually violating, I think, you're stepping over the line when it comes to local control. But, you know, we're still a land of immigrants here, and, but just, just amazed by the folks who are drunk on power, and last time I checked, we're a democracy, not a dictatorship, so we'll see how things develop on that. Interested in seeing how things will move forward with our lakefront plan. We'll be meeting next week with our lakefront group, now that we've selected a vendor on that, and also getting closer to making an announcement here on our transit planning consultant, as part of our planning grant for transit, which is going to be exciting. Condolences again going out to the John Parsons family, went to the service for him on Saturday, and he had talked about, his family members were talking about experiences they had with him to explain the kind of person he was, and he, he talked about not doing things in life to please people, because you'll always be disappointed. I guess in the early 50s, he was also the president of a fraternity, and the fraternity in the early 50s did not allow minority members, so he had the fraternity separate from the national fraternity, started a different fraternity there on campus, and was recruiting minority members. And, and the ultimate story about how he was always doing things to work with people. His son said he took him to a baseball game just a few years ago, when he was still in bad health, and said to his dad, always wanted to ask you, Dad, we go to baseball games, do you really like baseball? And he said, no, not really, but you do, and that's why I go. So, and that's, that's what being a father is all about. Congratulations to those who put on the International Festival Chicken Dinner on Saturday. I thought that was well-attended, a lot of folks were there, very much enjoyed it. I didn't know city chicken, though, was actually pork.
You didn't know that?
I did not know that.
How long you lived in Lorraine County?
I don't know, I did, I just didn't know that. I don't know. I'm eating, and I'm thinking, this doesn't really taste like chicken. I don't know.